...special meeting Monday, March 2nd. As I look around the table, we're all here this evening for this, so let's go on to the program. Is there anybody in the audience that would like to address the council on a non-agenda item? Okay, then let's get down to the business. The only item tonight is to consider approving a budget expenditure exceeding $500,000 to construct Goodyear Boulevard improvements. Regis Reed, project manager, to present. Regis?
Actually, I'm standing in for Regis.
It's okay, Rebecca.
You're sitting in for Regis.
Yes, I am. Good evening, Mayor and council. I wanted to present a similar PowerPoint than we had, that we had last week, so some of the slides are going to be the same, so I'm just going to touch on those very briefly, but then I've added some new slides in here to help detail some of the improvements that are part of this Phase One. So again, we're moving through. We're going to show you Phase One improvements. I'll also just slightly touch on Phase Two improvements, and then at the end, we'll go back over the project timeline. Regis had presented last week on the history of the project and how these improvements associated both with Phase One and Phase Two really benefit the city center area as a whole. What you're seeing here on the left-hand side of the screen is the current situation with respect to the roadways out at the Desert Edge area, Desert Edge High School. I'm trying to get the mouse to work here. Here's Desert Edge High School. This is the existing Sherman Street, and here's Goodyear Boulevard. On the right-hand side, you will see the Basis School site. The red highlighted areas are the Phase One improvements, and again, I'm going to go into detail on what some of those improvements are on the next few slides, and then the blue section is the Phase Two piece of this project. This is a close-up view of the Sherman Street and Goodyear Boulevard improvements. Today, what you have is two lanes on Sherman Street. You have three lanes on Goodyear Boulevard. So basically, you have a movement northbound on Goodyear Boulevard, and then west onto Sherman Street. Or coming out of the site, you have a eastbound on Sherman Street to southbound on Goodyear Boulevard. The Phase One improvements, as presented last week and are part of this project, I'm going to look first at Sherman Street. It shows the widening of Sherman Street by approximately 20 feet to include a curb and gutter on the north side, as well as a sidewalk. The lane configuration shows two lanes going eastbound, one that is a right maneuver, and one that is going to be a left maneuver onto the new Goodyear Boulevard. In addition, there's going to be a lane, a turn lane coming in heading westbound on Sherman Street, and as you move to the west, this left turn lane coming into the school. And that's on the south, coming south into Desert Edge. In addition, you will have a widening slightly of this area on Goodyear Boulevard. It'll be a similar configuration, but it'll be restriped for clarification purposes. Right now, it's a little less easy to figure out the maneuvers and the directions of travel. There will be a southbound lane. There will be a left turn lane, and then there will be a northbound on Goodyear Boulevard. Trying to get the mouse to go that way. In addition, all of Goodyear Boulevard over to Australia Parkway will be improved with three lanes in the Phase One piece. So that will have two lanes heading out to Australia Parkway, with one lane coming in to go straight or making a right-hand maneuver onto Sherman Street. This is Goodyear Boulevard in Yuma, so coming southbound on Goodyear Boulevard. Today, we have a right and through lane, as well as a left turn lane, and then a northbound lane. Our improvements for Phase One will actually widen this intersection to have a right turn, a straight-through lane, a left turn, and then an inbound lane. In order to make that configuration work, we are also doing some widening on the south side to ensure that we have that available pavement to make that maneuver work. This is the Goodyear Boulevard as it connects with Australia Parkway. Again, this area is unimproved today, but we will be widening, constructing the roadway, and then widening both the, I'll say, the mouth of this intersection in Phase One. And then we will be also doing improvements on the east side of Australia Parkway in order to meet up with the lane configurations we have. And so as you see, we have a two-left turn lanes going north, and then a right and through lane. And on this side, we have the through lane, and then, I'm sorry, right here, a through lane, and then a leftbound south, as well as the two-through, and the right northbound In addition to the Phase One improvements, we, in engineering, have met several times this past week with the school district and Desert Edge High School specifically to discuss the operational specifics of how their site works. And due to those conversations, we are proposing to add another entrance, driveway entrance here from their student parking area onto Goodyear Boulevard to further enhance the improvements that we have in this package of Phase One. The information that is shown on this project timeline, we have moved this approval to construct for the one week to today, which is March 2nd. And then we are proposing to have a pre-construction meeting on March 12th, and then soon thereafter be able to proceed with the construction of this project if it is approved this evening. And we intend to still maintain the dates as shown here with a substantial completion on the 15th, and then soon thereafter, a final acceptance of the roadway. We do not see that this change in one week will negatively impact the project. With that, I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. That was a very clear presentation, and especially the diagrams, it was very helpful. So we do have one speaker card, so I'm going to invite Julie Jones, principal of Desert Edge High School, up to speak. And as you come up, I will tell you that you're limited to three minutes. The yellow light in the buzzer will let you know we have 30 seconds left to speak. And before you speak, please identify yourself clearly for the record, your name and address.
My name is Julie Jones. I live at 1-8314 West Montebello Avenue in Litchfield Park, and I am the principal of Desert Edge High School. I just wanted to take this opportunity to thank Rebecca, and Bob, and Luke, and Keith for working so closely with us over this last week. They've been very diligent in getting the project to the best interests of our community and our students, so we're very appreciative of that. We are in agreement with what they are proposing. We do believe that is going to help alleviate some of our concerns. As well as, as a school, we have some things that we need to do on our end to also help out with the traffic flow and what's best for our students and keeping our students safe. So I just wanted to thank the city planners, and thank the council, and just thank everyone who took the time to listen to our concerns and help us with this problem, and I believe that we've been able to resolve the concerns that we had. So, thank you.
Ms. Jones, thank you so much for coming before us this evening. And it just goes to show, when you have a conversation and you have time to explain all the facts in a civil way, and Rebecca, thank you. This is exactly what we needed. We wanted to make sure that the school knew that we care about them and the students and that entire area. And I really appreciate your support tonight, coming before us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I would like a motion, please, to approve the budget expenditure exceeding $500,000 to construct the project number ST1404, Goodyear Boulevard improvements, Yuma Rome to Australia Parkway. Do I hear a motion?
No, moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Lortano, and a second by Councilman Campo. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stip.
All right. I appreciate that we've gotten this far, and it's good news. I've got a couple of timing questions, and Ms. Jones, you may, this may come from your area. We're going to construct an entrance into the student parking lot, from what I understand. Is that, that's correct? So with that, there's going to be a disruption in the traffic flow on Goodyear Boulevard and in the student parking lot. Is this planned to be done after school lets out?
We haven't identified the actual time, but we, again, once this contract is awarded, we would sit down with Colmes Construction, the school, and Basis School as well, and determine when is the best time for this construction to occur to minimize the impacts.
Obviously, we've got great concerns about limiting the flow, especially on the Goodyear, I'm sorry, on the Sherman Street construction, given that's where the buses are, and it's the only entrance or exit out of that student parking lot. I think I have to overemphasize the importance of us not screwing up the school at this point. I know that was of great concern from the parents that contacted me personally over the weekend regarding this issue. The second question that I have is regarding the cost. Last week, this project sat before us at $2,623,570.66. Very specific. This week, it sits at $2,750,000 even. I'm assuming the additional costs come from constructing the entry into the school parking lot. How does this affect our overall budget, because this project has not gone well from a budgeting standpoint from the very beginning?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stip. I have spent some time today looking at the overall budget, and with a $5.5 million not-to-exceed number, I can say we will not be exceeding that number, even with the addition of this driveway.
So, did we over-budget the original project?
I wouldn't say that. We have a engineer's estimate is what we base these numbers on, and we had our bid opening a couple weeks ago, and we actually came in a couple hundred thousand dollars less than our estimate. And I'm sorry, I need to correct that. It was 19% lower, and I think it was approximately, and if Keith is here, he could jump up, I think about $400,000 less than what our estimate was, and so we're seeing a savings in that portion, as well as then when we take our Phase Two estimate, we use the unit prices that we received, we also see a decrease there.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Osborn.
Thank you. You hit upon, Councilmember Stip, a couple of my questions. Unfortunately, I wasn't here last week when this came up. Dr. Runyon had sent me the letter regarding some of this on Friday, the 20th, which I immediately had sent out to Mr. Dahlke over these concerns, and then, you know, wasn't here. And so I did not get to hear everybody's concerns and what transpired on Monday night. I'm glad that we were able to, you know, find solution in such a quick amount of time, and you really did hit upon my big concern of, obviously, if, from the very beginning, the amount that this project was going to cost the city continues to increase, and here was another $120,000 issue, but yet still found a way for it. So my question was going to be, you know, what else are we accounting for? How much did you actually have within this budget that was going to be contingency? But evidently, the bids are favorable in our arena, so that's good. I guess my question would be, or my concern, because the budget's already been, that has been addressed, is communication. And how did we not foresee this problem? And you probably already all asked this last Monday, but I, pretty beat up, okay, well, I opened the can. You guys closed it, I'm sure, but for continuing on this project, and any project, how are we going to overcome that? How did this occur?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Osborne, I appreciate the question, and as I stated last week, that this was my responsibility, and from this point forward, I have, I will certainly take this into account and ensure that this does not happen again.
Councilwoman Campo, you weren't done?
It's okay. Not to beat it up, but had we had the concern been elevated to this council before Monday night last week, we would have addressed the concern, but we were not afforded that courtesy. However, that being said, I do know that the school district is very happy with what we have, what we are proposing and are in total support, and I have the guarantee that we will not, again, ever have a miscommunication on either side from this day forward.
And I want to add to that. I think communication was on both sides.
On both sides, right.
Lortano.
I want to thank you, because, I don't know if Councilmember Osborne knew, but they actually went out to look at the traffic pattern out there, so I think once we figured out we had a problem, I do appreciate that we all kind of stepped up to work through it, so I do appreciate that. I know there was an issue with regard to the buses, and they got some bonding to change their bus lanes, I guess, for construction. Are we coordinating with any changes that they need so that we're not blocking up the street when they need it, or how are we doing that to coordinate with the funding they got for some changes in their bus lanes?
I'm not aware of any changes that they're proposing with their busing from this point forward. Approximately 18 months ago, they had proposed the enlarged bus bay, and they moved forward with that construction, and that's what I understand they will continue to use.
Okay, so that's done. I wasn't sure if that was done or not done. And then the only thing, because we have had that communication in case, because we did get notes from parents in the area, if you could kind of let us know when they do start construction in certain areas, just kind of let us know and kind of keep us apprised, I would really appreciate that.
Absolutely. One thing I did want to mention on that note is that we will include Basis and Desert Edge High School in all of our construction meetings. Again, we intend to have a pre-construction meeting on March 12th, which they will be invited to, and they will be invited to each construction meeting after that. In addition, the Assistant City Engineer, Keith Brown, as being the overall project supervisor for this project, he will be meeting monthly, and will set up that time with Desert Edge High School to go over any issues that they're having with traffic, and will be able to respond to those as quickly as possible. They will have not only my contact information and Luke's, as well as Keith's, so that if anything comes up, we'll be able to respond quickly.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Vice Mayor?
I appreciate you able to get a consensus with the school. My biggest concern is it's the project that seems to keep on giving, and what I mean by that is even though you've got money to spare, it's still costing $125,000 more than what would have if we probably would have brought all this to piece together. And remember, some of our earlier discussions, it's about double what some of the earlier numbers were. So I think in the future, I think it's critical, as we kind of move forward, make sure whatever projects we have, that open lines of communications were there, because, and again, everybody knows, when we did this project, I was the lone, because I really, truly believe the deal was too unsighted on once. But again, it's water under the bridge, we've got to move forward with this. But my point is to keep those lines of communication, and I got a question for the attorney. We're building a road for the school. That's no legal issues regards to that, as far as gifting or anything?
Mayor, members of council, I like that issue, but we're creating the condition, and it's accessing our public roads, so I didn't feel it...
That's not going to be a problem? Okay, all right. Again, just to piggyback on Councilmember Stip, I know these, when we budget numbers, there's always room in there, but I'm still disappointed it's costing an additional 125. But with that being said, I want this thing to be finished and done. I want the resolution with the school, and I want to make sure the kids are safe, and the traffic is such that that's not an issue, so. But just in the future, we want to make sure this is not another issue.
I would like to add, Joe, to, thank you. Add to it that the Goodyear Boulevard has been proposed over and over again, and almost got built several times over. And so this isn't something, Boulevard isn't something just for the school, it's for the city center. And because we're building this road, and yes, Basis School's going to be there, but what we were hoping it would generate the city center. And I asked for it several years ago, and I couldn't get council acceptance of it, and I asked over and over and over again. So as far as I, this is great planning for our school. It's unfortunate, we went through what we did during this transpiring between the school and what we're doing, but I think it's for the betterment of the community. And just, how much is this 500,000 percentage of the budget?
That's not my issue.
That's my issue.
Okay.
How much? Do we have a percentage of 500,000 of the budget?
Of our entire, of this budget?
Of our, the whole budget. The whole budget. Let's go to the whole budget for CIPs.
For this overall project, what percentage? I can, I don't have that information.
But it, but, 2%?
If it's 5.5 million dollars, yeah.
I'm just curious. When we talk about this figure, we, you know, I agree, we don't want to overspend, and we certainly want to know what they're to price of it, but overall, for what it's going to produce, I think that additional that we're putting into this is going to, we're going to reap the benefits from this. So we all learned a lot of lessons from this, and again, we always talk about communication, we all talk about communication, and yet we have this happen. So, and we're probably all at fault on this. So it's not just pointing fingers at one person. We can talk to each other, the school could have talked to us. There was just so much, we could have had a little more forethought in this and whatever. So, anyway, thank you. Any other questions for, before we vote? Okay, then all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much. All right, now it's the time for council to have any comments or recommendations, report on current events. Wally?
I'm only going to report on our event on Saturday. It was the Arizona Side Tech Day, and I attended Centerra Stelm Elementary School and saw all their displays, and it was really fun to see what all the kids had done, and I met a lot of parents there. And then I went to the Goodyear Ballpark, and I was very proud of the Goodyear Fire Department and Police Department with all their static displays and their robots, and there were families out there really enjoying themselves. So that was really a lot of fun.
Great.
I'd just like to make one comment, is I'm really excited about tomorrow. I'm anxious to see the 2015 spring training session to start, so that's taking the afternoon off to go watch baseball.
We're looking forward to seeing you up with it with the rest of us. Joanne?
Well, besides seeing Bob Seeger, hey, Joanne, you're like that.
You're more of a Led Zeppelin guy.
Who's Bob Seeger? Wally! Actually...
He's old.
He's old.
I just want you to know.
He's old, they're old.
Okay. It was my husband's Christmas present that finally came to town. Now, actually, Sheri and I both had attended the public forum for Taco Bell up in Australia Mountain Ranch, and then there was just a few people at that, and so I knew I had time to run down to Pebble Creek for the ADOT forum, and was quite surprised at the amount of people that were there. And I know that that's something that staff will be coming back to give us some updates and presentations, I hope, on that. But also, I guess really for the week, you know, we did attend the Cactus League luncheon opening, and that was, it's always exciting, back to Sherilyn's excitement over spring training beginning, and love the fact that everybody seems to be out and about in Goodyear doing things, and it's really quite exciting.
Good. Who's next?
No, I'm good.
Other than that, I do want to say, I was at the Taco Bell thing, and it was really good. They really did appreciate that Councilman Osborne, you know, they do like to see a lot of us up there, and when everyone came up for the debate, a lot of people commented, and they really do appreciate that, because we are a little far removed up there. But it's really a great community. The kids in all those schools had a drama play, and it was great to see people from the business community up there came out. It's like a big family up there. So it was really nice to see, you know, people that didn't even have kids in those schools come out to support them. So I think that's a really good thing. And they have a science olympiad team that got second in the region so far.
That's nice.
So they have STEM schools up there as well, so I'd just like to report that, and I look forward to when we do bring all the, one of my superintendents in as well. I'm really looking forward to that.
Anybody else? Bill?
You know, I'm the one who will always say we don't communicate well enough, so I'm going to, I was at the ADOT meeting on Wednesday, and there were 400 residents there from Pebble Creek, Palm Valley, Canyon Trails at this meeting, and the lack of response from ADOT was astounding, so much so that I have a meeting scheduled this week with the Public Affairs Manager to discuss that particular event, and I wanted my fellow council members to be aware of that. That's the communication piece. We, as a city, I believe, and I've shared this with the manager, we have an obligation to advocate for our residents in one way, shape, or form on this particular issue. And at this point, I'm not encouraged that ADOT is going to do what ADOT needs to do to solve this problem, and I hope that we, at some point, will have a discussion, or at least come to some consensus, that we need to do something to advocate for our residents. This is an ADOT issue. ADOT controls the corridor, ADOT controls whether they put a sound wall up or not. ADOT is in complete control of that, but we, as a city, can advocate for that position, and I think we need to take an active role in that. So I'll be meeting with them on that. And then, you know, finally, on a, you know, communication issue, this state-of-the-city controversy that has bubbled up from the weekend, I'm disappointed that we have not had a discussion at the council level about that event even coming forward, because it was not the same event that we had, at least in my mind, had discussed in the fall. And I think our city residents want to know how we feel about it, and me personally, I understand what we intended to do, and this is an economic development event specifically geared for the economic development of our city and for that particular audience. So the way that it's shaped, the way that it's designed, you know, the initial, like we talked about tonight, it's still in the planning stages, and so is this, and I think those initial constructs are fine. I think we got hung up... that supports the concept of us charging our residents to come here about the condition of their city. And I don't, and that was not the intent of this event. And, you know, we've all been receiving communications from the manager's office about perhaps it'll be an opportunity for us to do something in a different format for our residents to communicate that information. And that I'm very much looking forward to. But I don't think we can let this night go by without at least acknowledging what has happened. I, I think we'd be foolish to sit here and pretend that, that it didn't. So with that, I appreciate the time.
Anybody else want to? Well, I, I'll go through my schedule first and then address that. Okay, is this going to be long?
It was, I was going to address it in the, in the.
All right, go ahead.
To the manager, but I'll, I'll go ahead and wait.
In the manager?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just a few things. I thought it was very interesting. We had Alaska Mayor's visit us again. And it had all to do with our, what we have done with Luke Air Force Base, how the communities came together. And how, you know, we were able to sustain a campaign and, and make it so effective. And so they're, they're getting towards their final stages of their campaign to.
Do they have one closing or something?
Well, the rack is for everybody, you know, and that's the problem. And so they're, you're always fighting it, but they're, they're looking to get some F-35s in that area. So they're here, I'm working on that. So I thought that was, that was very interesting. The other thing, spoke at the Citizens Academy graduation ceremony. And what an enthusiastic class that was. And I would venture to say that in the future, you'll see some of those people serve on this council and on some of the other commissions. So it was very enlightening and, and very enjoyable. And congratulations. I know Matt's gone now, but Rob did a great job of taking over the program and so it was done very well. Again, the, the Cactus League luncheon was, was great. Really enjoyed it. And I thought, I thought it's, it's, it's always a proud day when you go to those and, and you have the competition between the different cities. And Peoria did a good job. The mayor made a nice speech and they had some very good speakers. And so it was very, very, very enjoyable. And then, you know, Manuel's had that, where you went to the.
The homeless chute.
The homeless chute.
Thank you.
Yes, and I think I was the only councilperson that went in there for lunch, but I did.
Oh, no, I was there.
No, no, you were there and Joe was there. That's right. We were all there at the same time. Only three of us. I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. So that was really, that was really good. And by the way, they have the best spinach, enchiladas. And then some of you, who, who was at the Katie's Oasis Assistant Living? Sherilyn, was there anybody else? Well, this is an assistant living that is, and they've actually made over a home. It's just a very, a very comfortable home and, pardon me?
Seven bedrooms.
Seven bedrooms. So it's a larger home. And so anyway, and they were very pleased that we would come to that opening. And I, it's, I think it fills another need. It's very, very much like you're, you haven't left your home, you've just moved in for, you know, another home. And they have a gourmet cook there and. An acre of land, lots of walking area fenced in. So that, that was very, that's a nice addition to our, our city. And then I spoke to the Southwest Valley Chamber Business Connection on Friday. And that was very well received. And much like I told the State of the City, I've been doing these talks in different areas when I asked. And so I, I kind of just do sort of a state. It's not complete, but partial on that, so. And then on Saturday, we were very busy. Molly and I were running around. But I went to the art collaboration at the, at the library and actually did an art project while I was there, which was real interesting. And so that's, who went to show, did anybody get to show the home for the ribbon cutting? The senior home? Okay, well, we couldn't do it because we had a funeral to go to, so it wasn't that. So, so that was my week. So any other comments?
I forgot one. The mayor and I attended Arizona Chapter Q of the Tri-T National Sorority. And we went to a luncheon with, I would guess, 400 women. And they had most of their state officers from the Tucson area that had driven up to join us. And it was a wonderful afternoon. And they raised money to send underprivileged girls in the fourth grade to camp. And they go up to the Girl Scout Camp up by Flagstaff. And these are young girls who, when they are chosen to go to camp, they're taken by one of the chapter members to the store to buy all the clothes that they need, their suitcase, their shoes, everything that they need. And then they're put on a bus and, and for 99.9% of these children, they've never been away from home. They've never gone to a camp, nor have they ever gone to a store and been able to buy what they've wanted. So it's just a really wonderful thing. And it is, they get the students from the Heritage Charter School, which is located at El Mirage Road and Glendale Avenue. So the mayor and I were very happy to be there. This is our second year to go.
And then I just want to just quickly respond to you about your, yes, communication was lacking. But, you know, communication goes two ways. And the West Valley View never called me, never had a conversation with me, made assumptions. They were wrong assumptions. They got the neighborhoods crazy by what they did. So where is their responsibility? I was very disappointed in that. Somehow, things happened here that wasn't, it wasn't meant to be what the people were saying it was. And I apologize if somehow this communication did not get out to you. But the fact of the matter, it was in planning stage and somehow a department put it out. And that, that was very unfortunate. But to say I don't talk to my citizens and that I'm not transparent is an insult. I probably speak more places than any other mayor in the valley. I probably go to more openings than any mayor in the valley. And I am out there. So I will tell you from a mayor's perspective, that was an unfair article. So, and I'm, you know, I, I wouldn't hesitate to tell Mr. Fred Breach in person. That was not good news media. That was scandal. They have been looking for something and he found something. And so he used it. And it's amazing that we can only use so many words in a column. Did anybody count the number of words in that column? It was huge. So he was wrong. And I want the citizens to know that there is, like you said tonight, you care about the citizens. I think we all do. And we did not deserve that. Sheri?
I, I just want to, I, I emailed the city manager when I heard about it. And I, I do appreciate the fact, and I think we need to get behind this and, and, and look at a way that we can broaden the government. Like, I think it's not what it was intended to be, but I think maybe it was the wording choice. You hear State of the City, you think of State of the Union. So that's kind of, I think, where there was some miscommunication. We've talked, I've talked to the city manager about also bringing our meetings out like we used to, to different areas of the community. I think that would be a good way to bring the, the, the message out further to some of the people that can't get along. I also want to say, I got, I, I don't like this as kind of making us more of a divide and I don't like that. We have, we are one Goodyear, we are one city. And it was very negative on Pebble Creek. And I don't live there, but there was emails that Councilmember Campbell forwarded and I, I responded to the gentleman that we have a lot of really great volunteers. They don't just volunteer in Pebble Creek, they volunteer in our schools. And I think we have to remember it. They reach out to the next generation. And I don't like, I didn't like how it was written that it was like a divide. I think we made missteps, of course. I think the way we handled it, I, I like the fact that, that our city manager is looking to ways to, I want to say to remedy it and to reach out. Because I don't think the intent was to disenfranchise people. That was never the intent. And I, I think that we need to bring people together and, and look at a way to do that. And I do appreciate the city manager has come up with several ideas to try to do this. And I think that's what he's going to do and I appreciate that.
It was unfortunate, it was a misunderstanding of the whole event. And, 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 and so, but I'm going to let the city manager address this a little bit. I had, oh, I'm sorry. I had a whole thing to read, but I'm not going to read it. Because that, this would have been, I heard. This would have been what staff would want me to say and it was a nice way, it wasn't, it wasn't burying the, the West Valley. Am I off on this?
Well, Madam Mayor, I was just going to recommend that there seems to be a lot of conversation developing around this topic and it's, it's not posted for tonight's agenda. So I might recommend that it be placed on a future agenda if you want to continue talking about it.
And that's, and that's the segue into what I was going to ask. Because I was going to ask that we bring this as an agenda item to discuss it, whether it's, whether it's a work session. But it's just like what we just did with Veterans Day. That's what we should be doing about the State of the City. Because we were all so excited about this back in the fall when we brought it up. So let's talk about what it looks like. And, and that's exactly what I was going to ask so that we didn't get ourselves in trouble for that conversation.
So even our city manager can't address?
Madam Mayor, it, it is not, if you're talking about future actions or future things.
It's a non-agenda item.
It's a non-agenda item. If we're talking about future actions of the city, we probably should stay away from it. Most of the conversation's been addressing an article in the newspaper, which certainly is not a future action to council. But still, best practice is to place it on an agenda.
Okay, okay. On that then.
Am I going to get another article in the paper on this?
Probably, but for something different. Will we get this as a future agenda item then?
If council's requesting it.
Yes, I'm requesting it. But, 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 are we going to, is this where we can talk about how they were ugly to Pebble Creek? And I'm going to bring all of Pebble Creek in here so that they can talk and tell you how wonderful we are? I mean, are we going to vent it like that or are we only going to talk about the event itself? Because that's what I was going to say.
I think it's more appropriate to.
What?
I think it's more, oh, well, never mind. I think it's more appropriate.
To a work session. Okay, can, okay, can I ask them?
No, ask the lawyer.
Right, okay. Okay, so for, for the event itself, to talk about it is one thing. To deal with what has occurred as the editorial, right? That is the question of city manager. Do we want to have this? Oh, I, I just don't know how to, what?
They go, let it die. The more attention you give it, the more angst it causes.
Well, I don't, I, I don't want to.
We're so angst out there, it's ridiculous.
I think we need to, I.
Well, I don't know what the question is then.
I should have stuck to the script.
I just need to be nicey-nice about everything and, and I didn't.
I'll just.
Can I ask another question then? Can I respond to Bill, Councilmember Stip's comment about the meeting at Pebble Creek, the ADOT meeting? Because I live there.
And that's not an issue that specifically impacts the city because it's not our initiative.
Right.
So I think that's common.
It's not our issue?
Well, no, it's not our initiative.
Our initiative.
It's an ADOT issue, I think it's always.
Well, I have, since that meeting, have talked to several, well, not several, many, many, many folks. And I am telling them that the mayor will be following up with MAG. Because I think that's the proper channel to do myself. And that I am sure ADOT will follow back up through the HOA as they said they would do. Because they said they would be the conduit for information. And that seems to, just, they seem to be okay with that. It's what I'm trying to say. I didn't promise anything, but I just.
Yeah, because.
No, I didn't. I just said that you, that MAG is the one that, that distributes the money and earmarks the projects through Maricopa County. And that you sit on the MAG board and that you would be the most appropriate person to do it, not me, because I don't go to MAG. Is that okay?
Does the city manager like to address that?
In addition, we may need several fronts on this as far as individuals working with either ADOT or MAG. We, meaning staff's already working with ADOT to try and, and look at a couple of things. One is getting the meters up a lot faster, the noise monitors, I should say. And then the other is, can they accelerate the rubberizing? So those have been discussions we've been having directly with ADOT staff. Goes way beyond the ADOT staff that were there at that meeting. They're a little bit lower down the food chain, if you will, so, but we have had those discussions and we'll continue to update. Because we feel, and I couldn't agree more with what Councilmember Stip stated. ADOT owns this, ADOT funds this, ADOT controls this. The feds are very particular, I mean, they have specific requirements that ADOT has to adhere to. So the city can't, for example, do its own noise studies. All that being said is we're, we're pushing that right now with, with ADOT and we will continue to update council. Because we really want to get to the point of letting the citizens know is if, if things are accelerating. And obviously, we're not there yet. The meeting just happened. But as we get updates, we will pass those along and we'll get them out to the public as appropriate.
Okay, well done. Oh, I guess I, sorry. I should tell you in the next meeting so I can find the paperwork here. Let me see, the next meeting will be 3:23, it will be a work session at 5 o'clock and the regular meeting at 6 o'clock.
So was that your, was that your report?
Oh, do you, I'm sorry.
I just had one, one last, just one last thing, Mayor, Council. Yeah, March 16th is our next meeting.
Right, and it starts at 4:30 with a.
4:30, that's correct.
No, that's what she said.
That isn't what she said.
Yes, it is. Play like you did. I heard her, but.
I'm just reading, oh, I'm just reading what's on the bottom of the script.
It's the 16th.
You know, Mayor, Council, just one other item, and I know many of you will be traveling. But there is this Friday Colors of the World Library Art Exhibit. It opens Friday, March 6th. Be there until June 30th, so you'll have an opportunity to see that. Twenty art pieces of artwork will be featured from 18 different artists. And it will include a lot of global representation. So it's really, our Arts and Culture Commission's been involved in this. They selected the feature work from 43 submissions. So the artist reception, just as a placeholder, will be March 24th from 5 to 7. So wanted to make sure you were aware of that. Beyond that, Mayor and Council, I have another updates.
Anything else? Meeting adjourned.